All right, I would like to call the meeting to order tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome everyone tonight to our meeting. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Ohm.
Yes.
Odie. Clatt. Saxer. Schrader.
Yes.
All right, with that, if there's no changes anyone wants to make to the agenda.
Madam President, I would like to bring the synthetic turf project bid brought above the line so additional information could be brought regarding the cost and the usability of it.
All right, so with that, we have an amendment to the agenda under General Business, number two, that's listed under Consent Approval, will actually be moved under number one, and that will be a line item. Any other changes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests tonight, and I do not believe there's any community input tonight, so that takes us to our first item of business under Oral Reports, a good news report about Bethany Meadows' kindness project. I got to ride the bus up and go to Chipotle and those kinds of things with the kids. It was kind of a highlight of the trip after the performance. We actually had a couple of tuba players from Lincoln High School. We didn't have tuba players, and we needed a couple, so we borrowed a couple from Lincoln. They played with our wind ensemble and did just a great job, so we thanked them. But Bob Carlson, Bob Gohean, Dale Nelson are doing a wonderful job with those kids and just did a great job at that. Our jazz band performed in Omaha last Friday. They performed in Mitchell. Some of you know, it's not a competition thing, it's more of you go and you perform and you get ratings, and they've performed exceptional at both of those so far. A new activity at Brandon Valley, we don't actually sponsor it, it's sponsored by band parents and the kids themselves, but Calvin Lepetsky started a winter percussion group, and they have, if you're at the halftime of the basketball game in February, they put down the tarp and they use props and they go through their show. They only did a very, very small piece of it that night, but they went to their first ever competition in Brookings on Saturday, won that, and qualified to, they qualified, they had such a score that they qualified to move to the next level of that winter percussion type thing. I don't know all of those details yet because it's so new, but I do know Calvin is a big part of that world, has been for a long time, and said that it's extremely rare for a program in this stage of infancy to achieve that level, so very proud of them. A one-act play, we held that state event at Brandon Valley earlier this month. Melanie Sittick, Brian Hardy and their crew earned a superior, several students had earned superiors, and just publicly Kevin Brick and his staff and his crew just do a wonderful job of running that. We get just rave reviews from the Activities Association and everybody who comes in, so to Kevin and that crew, wonderful. We had a state speech event last weekend, two weekends ago. Kelsey Frost was fifth at the state level. We had a young man, Kayden Hooky, was third in Program of Interpretation, that earned him a trip to Florida to Nationals this June, so Gina Kane and Kayden will head to Florida in June when it's nice and warm and humid and all of those kinds of things, but very proud, that's his second year in a row that he's qualified for that, so we're proud of them. Athletics, our Brandon Valley High School boys' club bowling team was fifth at the state tournament last weekend, our girls were seventh. Wrestling team had an incredible season, won a school record 14 duels, they were 14 and three in duels this year. They won the Metro Conference Championship for the second year in a row. They were one-half point from being on the podium as a team on Saturday at the state wrestling, but we still had our best placing in several years, and there were only two seniors, one varsity wrestler and one other senior on that team, so we have wonderful things to look forward to. We actually had a state champion, Isaac Klinkhammer, a freshman, had an undefeated season and was state champion. We had a couple of third places, a fourth, a sixth, and an eighth, so we had six place winners. We will host, Brandon Valley will for the first time ever host the state powerlifting meet this Saturday in our Activity Center. We will have six platforms in there, and we will start at nine, and no matter what, we will be done by about 4:30 because later that night we'll have a basketball game in that gym, and so we're a little nervous, but not really. Coach Bob Zine says that with six platforms and 300 and some athletes competing, that we will be done by 3:30, so I'm holding him to that because I said if we're not, they're going to finish in the auxiliary gym, so, but that's going to be exciting for us, for our kids to be able to host that. Boys' basketball finished the regular season 14 and 6. We will host either Douglas or we will host O'Gorman on Saturday at 7 o'clock in our gym. Winner of that game goes to the state tournament, it's a new round of 16 format, it'll be the first year for that, so the winner of that game will go to the state tournament. And our girls' basketball, our boys will be the seven or eight seed, our girls finished 13 and 7, they'll be the five seed. We will host Mitchell on Friday night at 7 o'clock in the Activity Center, the winner of that will go to the state tournament. So lots of stuff going on that kind of closes out the winter, other than the powerlifting tournament and basketball. Hopefully, basketball teams are playing for a couple more weeks. Any questions? Thank you for yielding your time.
You can see why I wanted to give him a couple moments, there's just a ton of activities wrapping up and going on, and highlight some of the great things our kids are doing both in the fine art and athletic world, so that's all I have. I would certainly entertain any questions any board member may have.
All right, hearing none, that takes us to item number one under General Business, presentation of the Brandon Valley School District's five-year plan, 2018 to 2023.
I'll just jump right in then. This was forwarded to you, I think, last meeting, and I wasn't able to be at the last meeting, so we'll go through a few things, I'd like to touch on a few things here at the meeting. I know you've had time to read it for yourself and whatnot. As you know, I'm very passionate about this, it's a very important document for you as the Board of Education. It's your plan of what's going to happen in the financial world, in the capital projects world for the next five years, and it's a very important document for you guys, I think, to voice your concerns or voice your approval of various directions that we're going. The document itself lays out, is laid out in four sections is what I like to say, capital outlay, general fund, special fund, and then the enrollment projections. As I said, I'm very passionate about it, it's probably the most important document from my office that you'll receive, even more so than the annual budget because it does project out five years, and as you've heard me say many times before, planning for one year is real easy. Seeing how it affects you down the road five years, that's the tough part, and sometimes becomes a difficult decision then. So I think the first slide up there is the capital outlay projections, that's the, should I say, building fund, capital needs fund, major equipment and facilities fund. On the top half of that, the revenues are 100% generated by property taxes. It's the one fund that, that's all there is, is property taxes that come in there, a little bit of donations, but 99.9% of the money in that fund comes from property taxes. Down on the expenditure side, you'll see the red items there, the first eight or nine items that I have listed there, they're kind of reoccurring type items that we have each and every year, just the normal purchasing of buses, technology, you'll see in the technology section, about over a million dollars a year that we spend on technology throughout the entire five-year plan, inches up each year a little bit. The debt service, that's another thing that I'm very proud of, that's very minimal debt service in the capital outlay fund, you can see 550,000. The only debt we have in that fund is a small issue for the intermediate school, $6 million that we borrowed for the intermediate school in addition to the capital outlay, or the general obligation bonds, so we have a small amount of debt in that fund. Then down towards the bottom, you'll see larger projects that we accomplished, we only really have two more coming in the 1819 school year, the renovation of the football field, and then the high school remodel, as I have it listed there, we're going to convert the old office space into three classrooms, remodel a science room, remodel the family and consumer science room, and have that pegged at 650,000 in addition to the million for the turf athletic field there. Some of the other projects that we've accomplished throughout the years, I call it, the fund is used to do our big little projects. Brandon Elementary addition, the library and music rooms, we did that addition out of the capital outlay fund, all these we did without incurring any debt. Middle School addition, we put on six classrooms years ago. Elementary secure entrances, we accomplished, high school secure entrance and the addition of the chorus rooms and scene shop. Middle School secure entrance and the addition of the smart lab facility and another music room. The maintenance building, the stadium renovation with restrooms and the concession area, so that's literally millions of dollars worth of stuff that we've accomplished out of the capital outlay fund without incurring any debt. Very, and it's done through a systematic prudent use of the funds. We have in the past saved some money, you know, to try to build it up, and then when we have the money, then we go ahead and do the project. As you can see on the projections out there, after this next year, we don't have a lot planned for bigger projects. We start a systematic approach to saving some money for a possible high school addition in the last year, but you can also see in the enrollment projections later on that our high school capacities are probably going to be okay up until the four or five year period, four or five years out period, so it might be the sixth year that we need to do that, but it's a situation that we could do that with the utilization of cash rather than bonding for those funds. I had a 5% increase in valuation each year, which equates to about $300,000 of additional money each year in the capital outlay fund. It's a good problem to have. Questions there on the capital project end of it? That's one portion of the, of the plan, a big portion of it in the...
Oh, hang on, have you seen 5% pretty steadily?
Pretty easily, yeah.
Has it been over five even?
It has.
Is five a little bit conservative?
Yes, it is. Five is conservative.
Yeah.
Last year was eight and a half, I think it was, and we just have, you know, the potential for a lot of stuff coming online with the East Side Corridor there, Highway 100 coming on, and so, I mean, if that gets back in the good old days where it was 10, 11%, you're talking probably half a million dollars coming in in new tax revenue each year into that fund, so even better than what it looks here.
Just an observation, Paul, too, I see the textbook paper, you know, tends to tail off, which, I guess, when you look at the technology spending, it's probably something I would look for that to maybe continue to happen. We're always going to need some print, especially people our age like print, but, so, anyway, just an observation.
You always include me as the same age as you.
I got my book.
That is correct, Carrie, and the print's still in the lower grades, it's really in the high school, it starts to fade off, that they've gone to the technology end of it and whatnot, so it's a plus. Other questions on the capital side of it? If not, I'll roll into the general fund side of it. This is our main fund, general fund, the operation, our operational fund. This is where a majority of your revenue and expenditures are, it's the largest of all the funds. If I can just take a moment to show how the spreadsheet works, it gets a little confusing. We start with, this is, the left-hand column is this year, 1718, and these are our budgeted numbers. We had more kids in the school district than what we projected, so we have an additional number of students here, so we have the additional revenue from those students of 135,000, so that will go into the revenues for this year and reduce our deficit. But the thing I really want to point out, that once it gets in there, either on the revenue or the expenditure side, once it gets into the budget, then I'm carrying it forward to the next year. So the kids that we grew last year, they're in there, or that we grew this year, they're in there now, and then they push forward to the next year. So anything that we do in addition is actually additional kids that year and additional revenue. As you can see, I have additional funding from students of 700,000 for next year, that's a growth of 125 students. I'll talk a little bit later on that. The other revenue, we're going to have an increase of about 50,000, maybe, maybe even a little bit more, we're towards the tail end of the fluctuation of other revenues, you know, we've been fortunate with other revenues, we've had a good stream of those coming in, but the equalization of those is occurring, and we have a couple more years or one more good year where we're not having to give it up in the equalization process, so we should net out in the equalization process about even, but it's kind of nice this year that we'll pick up some money in that whole scenario, so we'll pick up 50,000, 60,000 there. Bank franchise tax is coming around again and doing real well for us. So same on the expenditure side. And have that pegged at 650,000, in addition to the million for the turf athletic field there. Some of the other projects that we've accomplished throughout the years, I call it, the fund is used to do our big little projects. Brandon Elementary addition with the library and music rooms, and we did that addition out of the capital outlay fund without, all these we did without incurring any debt. Middle school addition, we put on six classrooms years ago. Elementary secure entrances we accomplished, high school secure entrance and the addition of the chorus rooms and scene shop. Middle school secure entrance and the addition of the smart lab facility and another music room. The maintenance building, the stadium renovation with restrooms and the concession area. So that's literally millions of dollars worth of stuff that we've accomplished out of the capital outlay fund without incurring any debt. Very, and it's done through a systematic prudent use of the funds. We have in the past saved some money, you know, to try to build it up, and then when we have the money, then we go ahead and do the project. As you can see on the projections out there, after this next year, we don't have a lot planned for bigger projects. We start a systematic approach to saving some money for a possible high school addition in the last year. But you can also see in the enrollment projections later on that our high school capacities are probably going to be okay up until the four or five year period, four or five years out period. So it might be the sixth year that we need to do that. But it's a situation that we could do that with the utilization of cash rather than bonding for those funds. I had a 5% increase in valuation each year, which equates to about $300,000 of additional money each year in the capital outlay fund. It's a good problem to have. Questions there on the capital project end of it? That's one portion of the, of the plan. A big portion of it in the-
Oh, hang on. Have you seen 5% pretty steadily?
Pretty easily, yeah.
Has it been over 5 even?
It has.
Is 5 a little bit conservative?
Yes, it is. 5 is conservative.
Okay.
Last year was 8 and 1/2, I think it was. And we just have, you know, the potential for a lot of stuff coming online with the east side corridor there, highway 100 coming on. And so, I mean, if that gets back in the good old days where it was 10, 11%, you're talking probably half a million dollars coming in and new tax revenue each year into that fund. So even better than what it looks here.
Just an observation, Paul, too. I see the textbook paper, you know, tends to tail off, which, I guess, when you look at the technology spending, it's probably something I would look for that to maybe continue to happen. We're always going to need some print. Especially people our age like print. But, so, anyway, just an observation.
You always include me as the same age as you.
I got my book.
That is correct, Carrie. And the print still in the lower grades, it's really in the high school, it starts to fade off, that they've gone to the technology end of it and whatnot. So it's a plus. Other questions on the capital side of it? If not, I'll roll into the general fund side of it. This is our main fund, general fund, the operation, our operational fund. This is where a majority of your revenue and expenditures are. It's the largest of all the funds. If I can just take a moment to show how the spreadsheet works. It gets a little confusing. We start with, this is, the left-hand column is this year, 1718, and these are our budgeted numbers. We had more kids in the school district than what we projected. So we have an additional number of students here. So we have the additional revenue from those students of 135,000. So that will go into the revenues for this year and reduce our deficit. But the thing I really want to point out, that once it gets in there, either on the revenue or the expenditure side, once it gets into the budget, then I'm carrying it forward to the next year. So the kids that we grew last year, they're in there, or that we grew this year, they're in there now, and then they push forward to the next year. So anything that we do in addition is actually additional kids that year and additional revenue. As you can see, I have additional funding from students of 700,000 for next year. That's a growth of 125 students. I'll talk a little bit later on that. The other revenue, we're going to have an increase of about 50,000, maybe, maybe even a little bit more. We're towards the tail end of the fluctuation of other revenues. You know, we've been fortunate with other revenues. We've had a good stream of those coming in. But the equalization of those is occurring, and we have a couple more years or one more good year where we're not having to give it up in the equalization process. So we should net out in the equalization project, process about even. But it's kind of nice this year that we'll pick up some money in that whole scenario. So we'll pick up 50, 60,000 there. Bank franchise tax is coming around again and doing real well for us. So same on the expenditure side. If you can drop down, we had 26 million of expenditures this year. And then they'll carry forward to the next year of 26, too. And I'm adding and subtracting all these things for next year, 26, 9, just under 27 million. And then that carries forward to the following year, goes through there, carries forward to that year. So I wanted to just be sure that you all understand that, that once we put something in there on the revenue side or the expenditure side, it's in there the following year. If we purchase a software program, IXL or whatever, it carries forward to the next year. It's in there already. Key drivers in the fund are obviously the enrollment down in the bottom. That, that's the straw that stirs the drink, folks. Everything is predicated on the enrollment. If we don't, we are so fortunate and in such a good position with growing enrollment. Growing enrollment that it's manageable, 100 kids a year. 125 kids for next year gives us $700,000. Now, I will say that we watch the kindergarten enrollments and, and signups and stuff each year. And, and I go back to my notes and I get all nervous about this stuff. At the same time last year that we are today, we're 30 kids short of where we were last year. So why, I don't know. But the same date, so maybe the 125,000, it will be a little strong next year. I don't know. It's, it's a tough thing to project, as you know. And later in the book, you'll see the enrollment projections that on average, it's about 100 kids a year. But that kindergarten class is so key to everything working for the district. But it's not going to be traumatic, because the other thing that we have in there, the other thing that's predicated on this is the state aid increase. And that's in this projection at zero, which was what we were told we were going to get by the governor's budget address was 0%. Now, that's coming around a little bit in the legislature that we might get a little increase there. So if, I had in my notes that if we dropped 30 kids from last year, or from my projection here, that'd be about 165,000. If we got half of what we were entitled to in state aid, which would be half of about 1.7%, 0.8% or so, that'd be about 180,000. So kind of a wash. So that's what I'm kind of basing my whole of caring for with, with the same numbers that we have. Can you pop up that, the IXL spreadsheet, Jared? I want to just show you guys as a board why it is so important, and I had this conversation with the legislators this weekend, why it is so important that they meet their statutory requirements, that the law says that we're supposed to get the rate of inflation or 3%, whichever, whichever is less. But when they do the budget, I mean, it came out that we get zero. And how much of a difference that makes, if we got 1.7%, that would make that number right there 375,000. Plug that in there, if you would.
375?
Thousand, yeah. That's what we're supposed to get by statute, 1.7%. And now if you drop down and see what that did to the spreadsheet. No, scroll down, scroll down. You see the bottom line there, the surplus, that was 175,000 negative. All those numbers were negative. That's just one year of, of that. That's how important that is, folks. And I talked to the guy, you know, like you said, it's law, Sandy. And I said, why do we get to pick and choose the laws that we follow? I don't think you do, or I do. But I guess that's how it is. Yep. And then you can see all the red. But just that, plugging in that 1.7%, which isn't very much increase, but it just changes all the red to black. And now we would probably do additional things with that money, but there are things that would enhance our programs and, and whatnot. So I, that's key there to see what that does and how important those inflationary increases are to the school district throughout the term. I will. I'll be running for governor when that happens. So as we talked about the key drivers, enrollments, an 1819 school year, in the expenditures, you can see that I, I do plug in a number for salary increases. I think I plugged in 1.2% of that 212,000. That's neither here nor there. That's just a number to try to show the board of, of a small raise, what that would do in the bottom line. And then the other big factor is additional staff, 400,000. $400,000 of additional staff to the Brandon Valley School District would be about six teachers. A teacher on average would cost the district about $65,000 is what we figure. So that would be six additional staff to handle those 125 kids. Not, you're not expanding any programs at that level. You're, you know, basically maintain, take 125 divided by 25, and that's five teachers right there. So that's the other big column, the salaries. And we have 400,000 going across there, which would make sense on the growth of 100 kids every year, hiring five, six staff each, each and every year. In 1920, I just want to remind people, there pops across this $275,000. The pension fund will end in 1920. We'll go one more year with the current pension fund. That'll end, and we'll put those expenses over into the general fund. Now, it will be offset a little bit. Our plan all along, since they changed the law on the pension fund, was to, excuse me, increase our cap, capital outlay flexibility by about 100,000. I have 125,000 in here to help us to withstand those costs being transferred over to the general fund from the pension fund, 275, and will be offset 125,000 there. And scrolls down, rolls down from there. How about any questions? Oh, one other thing, all the way to the right, Jared, if you can make that go to the right. Down, scroll down just a little, right here, the 150,000, 150,000. Those are operational costs for a potential new school building. Very key for you as a school board to keep, always keep that in mind. I've seen it too many times where the district will build the school. School's easy to build, you pass a bond issue, and then, uh-oh, I don't have enough money to put custodians and all that, and put heat and lights in there. And that's a big thing. Heat and lights, custodians, all that stuff amounts to probably $3.75 a square foot, which would be 300,000 plus. I have it being put in there over a two-year period, start the process before, you know, because quite frankly, it'd be the end of the five-year period that we have planted in there. Ty has planted in there probably a new elementary school somewhere, starting there, building there. Our capacity charts, you saw that slide in the, in the five-year plan? You go all the way out to the five, end of the five years, and capacities are good. I mean, the two elementaries, Robert Bennett and Fred Assam, are near capacity at that, at the end of that, but not overflowing. But, you know, I can't predict exactly that that's, that's where it's going to be. You know, the growth might come at Fred Assam and then nothing at Robert Bennett. So we got 600 kids at Fred Assam. You just never know exactly where that growth is going to be. Intermediate school, middle school are pretty good, and high school, pretty good in those capacity charts throughout the five-year timeframe there. Questions?
Mr. Flunberg, speak or provide a, kind of a short overview on, there's a, when you look at the capital outlay and the general fund working together, there's a pretty good feed of dollars coming out of capital outlay going into the general fund? Just kind of touch on that, if you would.
There is. Started in whatever year that was where we took a huge decrease in the funding when Governor Dugard took over and he cut all the agencies and cut school districts by 8.6%. We had to figure out, figure out ways to, to make that work. And what, one of the biggest ways that we made that whole process worth, work without laying off people or cutting salaries or anything was to implement capital outlay flexibility. And what they, what that is, it allows us to pay for general fund expenses through the capital outlay fund. And now we're transferring that money from the capital outlay fund into the general fund, just same thing. We're just transferring it rather than paying for those expenses out of the capital outlay fund. So we currently transfer 675,000, have been for the last four or five years and continuing this whole plan. We bump it up to 800,000 when we move that pension fund in there. But it is a large chunk of money that we take from the capital outlay fund over to the general fund that has allowed us through the years to do the various things that we have done in the general fund with little better raises than everybody else and/or additional programs. So yes, it is a big chunk of money. It is substantially lower than what we are allowed to do by law. We would be allowed to do, if we max it out, probably just a little over $2 million. But I, we've, I think we've done a very good job of what the, you know, we still need to build buildings, we need to fix buildings, we need to buy stuff out of that capital outlay fund. We, we just can't decimate that and take it all out of there. So I think it's a happy medium, is what I guess I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
Somewhere in the middle. Any questions on, you know, I won't touch much on them, but the capacity charts and the enrollments. The enrollments I have in there, about 100 kids a year, which is about 2 and 1/2%. Pretty solid. The kindergarten right now, like I said, makes me nervous, but I get nervous every year. And it seems to come through, that we always seem to have 300-plus kindergartners here, no matter what anyhow. So the kindergarten gods just like to see me nervous, I guess.
Another, another observation, Paul. Tell me if I'm correct in looking at it this way. When you look at the general fund and the fund balance, you know, 2017, 18, out to 22 and 23, I think that speaks to what you often refer to as the responsible spend down?
It is.
You know, that's, okay.
It is, very much so. And if you, you can see we're deficit, deficit spending on the budgetary numbers there. But history would show us that our revenue would be a little better, our expenditures will be a little under. So these deficit, history would tell us that these deficits tend to get wiped out and don't actually occur. That's why I don't have a lot of problem running them like that in the $200,000 range. 1% of 30 million is 300,000. So if we come in at 99% of our budget, we would underspend our expenditures there by $300,000, and it would wipe out the 275,000. So that's why I'm very confident. So if you took all those out, our fund balance at the end of this five-year period would be about 5.5 million. Just, you know, it'd be balanced, because it's, they're all about 1% or in that range. So we would end up with a fund balance of about 17% rather than 14%, which we have a, you know, we have a good plan for that fund balance. Even if all that came to fruition, the 4.5 million at the end of the five-year period is still a manageable number, still a good number. We cash flow everything with that.
It's important to note, too, a lot of legislators look at school fund balances, and they're way less generous with their purse strings when they look at school fund balances in the general fund that have, districts that have millions and millions and millions of dollars. And then they say, well, if districts X, Y, and Z have millions and millions of dollars, then that means no, none of the 151 school districts deserve additional money from the state, because you all have too much money in your fund balances. So that's a constant fight.
Very true.
But it's, it's very helpful to have-
Very true.
-Paul, keep that balance at a manageable amount. And then it's also important to go back to legislators and insist that they question the districts that have the high fund balances, because as we know, you build that balance up when you're going to build a building. And not, most legislators don't understand that. They don't understand that it's important to budget for that. So they question every time the balances get too high.
That is-
So thanks for keeping it manageable.
That is very correct. And at the 5 and 1/2 million, 20% is, you know, that's a very good number. I always say that the lowest number that we probably want to go down to is the 13, 14% of expenditures and stuff. So we're still there at the end of the five-year period, and very likely that, that it doesn't go down that. Very likely that it ends up 5 and 1/2 million rather than 4 and 1/2 million. So you're at 17%. On the special ed slide that I had in there, the only thing I'm going to say about that is we're trying to rebuild our fund balance in that. It's pretty much eliminated. Throughout the years, we're down to 200,000, and we're trying to rebuild that throughout the five-year plan. And you can see it is rebuilding. But as we all know with the fund, it is so subject to change. Get here or there is, just changes that dramatically. So that's our plan to, to make that happen. But with that plan comes to fruition, I'm not positive on. The rest of the stuff that we have in there, additional staffing, enrollment projections, capacity charts, you can review those on your own and stuff. They are good information. I particularly like the capacity charts that we started last year. Ty helped me with those. Helps a lot to show you where we're at and where we'll be at in the five-year. Kind of gives you the whole sense of when that school is needed. As you can see, at the end of the five years, as I said before, Robert Bennett and Fred Assam get pretty near capacity at the end of that five years. So that's probably when that's going to take place, elementary school.
Paul, under special ed, how come you took such a big jump in enrollment? And then you, I mean, next year, plan 61, and then you drop back down to 30?
Our child count went up dramatically this year. It went up to 61 kids. That's the factual one this current year. Took a dramatic increase. Now, the 30 kid increase in child count would be more of a historical average, I'll say. But as Kyle has said, we, we're bouncing up quite a bit. So it might be even more. Maybe historical averages are out the window with that, with that. So.
Remember, I would note, Sped and Paul helped me, it's basically a year behind. So your child count, so our child, current enrollment child count this year is what we get paid for next year for special education funds. So even though our enrollment jumped dramatically this year in special education, number of special education eligible students, our funding is based on last year's enrollment. So that's just one item to note that it's basically a year behind.
Correct, correct.
But I thought the feds only looked at that every two years. So they're not going to look at it next year and give us an increase, because we had a big increase, because that's only a two, every two-year process?
No, every year.
It is every year?
Child counts every year.
Every year? Okay.
And if the state aid increase goes up in the general fund side of things, it's, it would hit on the special ed side, too. If we got the half of the 1.7, which is a possibility, that put another 85,000 into the special ed fund next year. You can see the big bump, though, with the 61 kids of $470,000 income from student enrollment increase. That's, those kids are all going into the child count. And then it drops down to 150,000 when you go to 30 kids. And it depends on what, you know, what disability all those children have, too.
Are we seeing a big, is it just kids within our district, or are we pulling some from other districts into here?
Nope, it's kids within our district.
Really?
Yep. And there, we're not exceptionally, when you look at averages across the state with special ed, special education populations, I think we run about 12 or 13% of our total population as spec ed. Pretty normal, pretty normal area. So we're not out of line, we're just out of money. And we're working on getting that built back up. Other questions? You know, I guess in summary, what I could say is that through all this, all these documents and stuff, the district is financially is in pretty good shape. Facility-wise, the capital project fund, general fund, everything has a plan. And it's, it's a pretty good projection of where we're going to be at in five years. And we're going to be in a good place. of where we're going to be at in five years. And we're going to be in a good place. Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you and your office do to make sure that we're informed and we appreciate this very much. So thank you again. All right, that takes us to item number two. Approve the recommendation to accept low bid for Mid-American Golf and Landscape LLC for the Brandon Valley High School synthetic turf improvements in the amount of $983,470. Since we have moved that above the line, we may have a discussion on it, correct?
I guess I just wanted to bring this forward to make sure that all, there's a few board members on board that probably don't know exactly in the Building and Grounds Committee where this might take place, the discussion of what's actually in this bid and also looking at the cost analysis. Does it, does it balance out or are things in the proper? It also gives everybody, because I think there's a few numbers or discussions that we as a board don't know. And in visiting with Superintendent Larson this afternoon, he filled me in on a few more numbers, which is starting to make more sense as far as do we execute this project or not. So I would like to ask him if he would at this time present some of these figures to make sure that the cost analysis and also how the usage of this facility would look.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I share a couple items. So when we initially look at this project, I would tell you that the cost analysis that we look at are two things. The current grass turf system is what I'll call it. And then on the flip side, you have the synthetic turf system, which we are recommending you approve here this evening. So Reader's Digest version regarding the grass turf system is annually, our maintenance cost to our football stadium, to our football field, is approximately $50,000. So I'll break that down a little bit for you. Basically, what you have is you have between $30,000 and $35,000 in labor going into that football field. That goes from mowing to watering to fertilizer to painting to all of those things, between $30,000 and $35,000. Water, approximately $13,000 is spent on water per year on the Brandon Valley football field. And that's based on approximately two inches of water per week during the watering season. And that would be based off of our city's current per thousand gallon water and per thousand gallon sewer amount, which is $13.24, okay? And that's all based on an analysis of the amount of field that we water and then how much it takes to get to that two-inch mark per week. Okay, so approximately $13,000 for water. All of this, I'm going to put an asterisk by it and say if we get a whole bunch of rain, we don't water, so that cost is less. If it's very, very dry, we might spend $20,000. So just note that these are approximate numbers. So $30,000, $35,000 for labor, around $13,000 for water, $4,000 to $5,000 for chemical, fertilizer, herbicide, all of that stuff, a few thousand dollars for paint. And then that's where we come up with our $50,000 mark regarding annual maintenance costs. I would note that there's some machinery that we have to have to mow, et cetera, those last two, three, four years. Those are not figured into that $50,000. Just want to note that. The synthetic turf system in and of itself, after you spend the money upfront to put it in, will cost approximately $5,000 per year to maintain. A synthetic turf, you just don't ignore it. You have to rake it with a special attachment that you'd haul behind, like a side-by-side or a golf cart behind it. There's a magnet that you can drag over it to pick up, you know, track spikes, for example, after a track meet or whatnot. So there's still some fluffing or grooming of that synthetic turf that has to happen. Estimated cost on that is approximately $5,000. We already have the machinery necessary to pull the attachments, which would be a small tractor or side-by-side. And then I would note that within the bid amount for Mid-American Golf and Landscape is the grooming attachments, the magnets, et cetera, for that maintenance work. So annual cost differential is approximately $45,000 a year. Let's call it 40 to 50, depending on the amount of rainfall, et cetera. So that's an item to note. Now, I'm not telling you that over a 10-year period, you save a half a million dollars because in 12 to 15 years, you will replace the actual carpet on the turf. And that, that's going to run you somewhere between 400 and 500,000 depending on, depending on the cost of the product at the time. Right now, you know, if it's $400,000 and you think about an inflationary increase, call it $450,000, in 12 years, you'll have to reinvest into your synthetic turf. So that's an item to consider. A few things that I would very specifically note regarding our recommendation to accept the low bid for Mid-American Golf and Landscape is this. First and foremost, we talk about a phased approach. So business manager Lundberg has shown you a five-year plan and plugged things in here, and then two or three years later, this happens. As our capacity grows at our high school and we need to put on additional space, whether that's in five years or eight years or 10 years, you will have to park more cars for staff, you'll have to park more cars for folks like that. Currently, we assign parking. And I would tell you that there is a shortage of assigned parking. I don't know if there's a shortage of parking per city, but the strategy that we currently use is assigned. My point is, is when you add additional space, you may need to utilize some land that you currently have for something else, such as additional parking, as your capacity grows here. So that's an item that I would note. It's a phased approach to your landlocked high schools' available space. Another item that I would note is usability and playability. This is extremely important to note. We currently, we currently play a football game on Friday night and maybe a JV game on that next Monday or whatnot, okay? So we're talking one day a week, maybe two during the football season. Other than that, it's very sacred ground and you don't go on there unless you have written permission from the activities director, signed off by the operations manager and initiated by the superintendent. So I mean, it's hard to get on there and not utilized like we would like to see it utilized. Moving to the synthetic turf increases usability. Quite frankly, I'm going to draw upon our soccer teams, for example. Our soccer team's currently played down at McCauley Park. And if you've ever been to a soccer game, you know the cars park all over and you just walk in. We're not able to capture a gate or any of those items. Point is, is now we can move our soccer games up here if schedule allows on a Thursday night or whatnot. You could play soccer games up here and our students would have the ability to be in front of the crowd on their home stadium, et cetera. And again, now your facility is being used, I'm going to say, if not every night of the week, real close. So usability is a really, really important thing as we consider the bone for our buck. And then the last item that I would note is that it is the final phase of your 2013 facility review committee's recommendation. The large, large group that looked at your facilities as a whole, as a whole, and provided recommendations for you as a board of education moving forward, asked for stadium upgrades. And they phased that in. And I do believe one of them dealt with your concession stand, press box, and then artificial turf. So the synthetic turf is the last phase of that stadium upgrade. Past that, I would certainly entertain any questions you may have. I would tell you that Director Marcel, Director Hinchell, and myself have spent countless hours touring various facilities, evaluating all of the, evaluating all of the infrastructure, whether it be the way the system drains, those types of things. In addition to that, we had the two turf companies, the two products, the two vendors that were outlined in our bid spec come and present to ourselves. And also Yankton and also Mitchell at that time, all the schools were in the same room and received a message from them on their product, et cetera. So we spent an incredible amount of time researching the products, ensuring safety, durability, all of those things up to this point. So it is our recommendation to approve and accept the low bid from Mid-American Golf and Landscape. I would note that the product and the vendor, the product in and of itself, would be the same type of synthetic turf that was put in at South Dakota State University. It has a RIT-based system or a RIT-zone system that helps keep the infill located at its specific spot, which is something that they speak very highly of and we've heard good things about. But anyway, an item to note, it would be the equivalent to the South Dakota State University turf that they have had recently installed a few years ago. So with that, I would certainly entertain any questions that you may have and/or any additional clarification on any of those items.
You had mentioned the other schools that we had been in collaboration with. Can you share, are they, we had talked about, you know, same vendor. Can you share what their decisions have been or have they made those decisions?
Absolutely. So Yankton has, is, maybe they either have or are going to approve in the near future, a contract with Mid-American Golf and Landscape for similar product. Mitchell, I do not believe has opened bids yet during that design phase process. They are,
Next Monday?
Next Monday they open. I would note that if you recall, we talked about decreasing our engineering costs, et cetera. I believe we're receiving an $8,000 deduct on our engineering costs because of our collaboration with Mitchell in the fact that they're using the same engineer, so some of those same specs, et cetera, were able to be identical. Now, not, the bid specs in and of themselves aren't identical because the projects are a little different, but we were able to save some costs regarding our engineering fees. So that's an item to note.
I got one question. If it's used for soccer, is it permanently painted, Randy? Would this turf be permanently painted? I mean, okay, football and soccer, their boundaries are different. How do you differentiate during a game?
In our, in our visits to other schools, we really liked, Ty and Jared and myself all really liked what the scheme that Howard Wood uses, the colors. So all of the football lines are white and all the soccer lines are black. We did, there's some that have gold. Most people that we talked to don't like those. So you just use, you just use black for soccer and white. They happen to be fit very well with our school colors. And we have a little bit of red in there at midfield with the BV and the links in the end zone and at the 20-yard lines.
Madam Chair, another item I would note, so like through the planning process, Director Marcel and Assistant Middle School Activities Director Frecking attended all of those construction meetings. So when we, when we look at the field layout, we were able to identify, we want to move, we want to move this line south so it aligns to this, like the out-of-bounds lines. Help me on the lines that I'm talking specifically to on the back of the end zone, the soccer lines now line up with the...
The soccer headlines line up with the end zone, the back of the end zone.
Yes.
Yes.
And the side, the sidelines of the soccer field, through our planning process, we were able to align them to the box of the football field. Were we able to do some tweaks with some of those things as well?
Actually, you want to make the soccer field as wide as we can. So they go, they go out as wide. We'll actually use those for kind of our stayback line for media and those kinds of things. Again, if you've seen Howard Wood field, we just like the look of that. It will look very similar. We'll just have a BV and links in there. But otherwise, it'll be very similar to what Howard Wood. Just has a nice look to it. Nothing fancy, just clean.
I got to put you on the spot for a second.
Yeah.
Is there a greater incidence of concussion for soccer players and football players playing on a turf field versus a grass field?
There's greater incidence and that there's more soccer in general than football, believe it or not.
I know soccer's the most highly concussed sport that we play. I know.
It is absolutely, what I would say is it's inconclusive because there are studies that say yes. I would say that the studies that I've seen and that when we've asked that question of manufacturers and things, the incidence of the studies that say yes, it's decimal points higher. In the studies that say no, it's percentage points higher or lower. So I believe, I believe that if you take the average of those, it still is a lower incidence of concussions on turf. But I can't, I can't tell you that because there are studies that say both things, Sandy. I can't honestly tell you because the researchers don't agree.
Mr. Marcel, help me find the name of the test that is actually conducted on the surface in and of itself to make certain that it's an acceptable playing surface. Is it called an impact test?
It's an impact, yeah. It's impact something.
Yeah, and it has to do with how hard the surface is
Yep.
For that very purpose. So I do believe that that's conducted.
And actually, artificial turf fits, fits that better or shows better than natural turf in those. And especially over time, when a, when a natural turf gets compacted, it gets a lot harder than the artificial turf when it gets compacted. The tools that we get and our maintenance staff, that's our job, is to make sure that that doesn't get compacted. And that's why we rake and groom and do those kinds of things. That all helps with that very issue.
Do you have, don't you have to infill with more of the rubberized granules over time?
Over time, over time.
Sooner than 12 years?
Oh, sometimes it depends, it really depends on wear patterns. It depends on climate. It depends on a whole lot of things. So there are, they can, they can actually come back and test for us. Didn't they say, Ty, I believe, and Jared? Bill's shaking his head. They can come, they will come back and test and they will do spot tests, random spots. And they, they know the areas of a football field and a soccer field that are generally lower in that infill. They will come and do those tests and then they know exactly where we need that infill. So they will do that for us. I believe they said that that's not even recommended. It's not necessary for the first five years. I believe they said in the fifth year is the first time that you do that.
One more question. Looking in the crystal ball, say five, 10 years down the road, when parking is a premium and we've taken some of these practice fields and turned into either a school building or parking, do you see that facility being used for practice as well as games? And are, is everybody going to be able to work around each other in order to...
That's, that's an easy one.
It is.
Crystal ball, crystal ball is about August 1st. If that thing's done August 1st, we will have practices August 1st through August 21st, when our first soccer match, our girls will play West Central. That'll be our first event on there. And we will have practice on there, Greg. That will be used every day. And, and sometimes multiple periods during the day. That could be morning, that could be the after-school, 3:30 to 5:30. That could be a 5:30 to 7:30. Football team comes on and then soccer team practices there. Because if they're going to play there, they want to practice there.
Right.
Yes.
So you're saying maybe practices all, all start at 3:30 after school. There might be some jockeying around as far as, like you said, 3:30 to 5:00 and then
I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't.
A 5:30 to 7:00 or something?
I wouldn't say that in a normal situation, but right now, our boy soccer coach has, is not a staff person. He works a nine-to-five job. So we don't start, we don't start boy soccer practice until 5:30. They'll have pretty much free rein of that thing from 5:30 on next year if everything stays the same. So yeah, we will, it will get a ton of use. It will be used every day. We don't have to worry about if it, if it rains a half inch during the school day, we still practice out there. We don't have to, we don't have to have football practice in the gym. We don't have to have soccer in the weight room in the gym. It increases our usability, increases our ability to have a whole lot more practice time and functional time for our teams.
Just didn't want to like, soccer wants it and football wants it and you're...
That's my job.
Okay.
That's, that's my job. And we'll put marching, we'll put marching band out there for, for a whole lot longer than they get now, you know, so, so it's not just athletics. PE will be able to use it. It's, it's going to be used.
Madam Chair, one, one other item I would note... Madam Chair, the one, one other item I would note is, regardless if this is the direction the Board of Education chooses to go, it has to be addressed, meaning it has to be re-crowned, and our state, and our, and our field would have to be re-irrigated, because we're not covering our field in its entirety. So you have a hug between, I'd say between $150,000 and $200,000 in work that would have to be done if you want to maintain a grass-playing surface. So that's just one item to note, that it's not, it's not pristine in the fact that it does not need some attention regarding re-crowning and irrigation work. So that's, that's just an item to note.
Any further questions for Mr. Marcel or Superintendent Larson? All right. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendation to accept the low bid for American Golf and Landscape LLC for Brandon Valley High School synthetic turf improvements in the amount of $983,470.
So move.
Second? There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you for the discussion and for the answering of questions. Appreciate it. Next, consent item number three. Approve recommendation to accept low bid from Pesca Construction for the Brandon Valley High School classroom remodel in the amount of $339,000 for the base bid, and $110,000 for alternate number one, for a total of $449,000. I move to approve general business item number three. Second? There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to personnel. Items number one through three, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented. Move to approve personnel items one through three.
Second?
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Communication, I don't believe there is any tonight under that section, which takes us to board reports. Are there any formal reports that anyone would like to give tonight? I'll just give a little update on EDEC or TeachWell. We are in the process of, with some of the things that have happened in the media with schools in the recent past, one thing we've discovered is we don't have many cameras or secure type of locks. So we have actually, we're in the process of, actually, we've already done this, submitted a grant to the Homeland Security, since our policies and procedures meet their protocol, and we're hoping that that comes through so that we can make that and our alternative school just as secure as our buildings and grounds out here. So just kind of wanted to give you an update on that. Otherwise, things are going well there. Anyone else? Hearing none. That takes us, there's some reports for you guys to look at for travel reports. That looks like the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.